Good morning. Being 9:00 AM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Committee of the whole meeting of January 16th, 2025, and Mr. Collins will lead us in the pledge today.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, could you please call the role?
Pamela Althoff.
Here.
Carolyn Campbell.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Joseph Gotamaller.
Here.
Terry Grino.
Here.
Eric Hendricks.
Here.
Carl Kaminski.
Present.
James Kearns.
Here.
Dina Crager.
Here.
Matthew Kunkel.
Here.
Brian Sager.
Here.
Michael Shorten.
Here.
Michael Scala.
Present.
Patrick Sullivan.
Here.
Larry Smith.
Here.
Paul Thomas. Gloria Van Hoff.
Present.
Tracy Von Bergen.
Here.
And Chairman Bueller.
Here.
Having a quorum, I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Hendricks to attend remotely. Mr. Kunkel makes the motion. Mr. Smith seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. Hendricks. Good morning. Before we begin reviewing the agenda for next Tuesday's voting meeting, I hope the county board will indulge me as a Crystal Lake resident in honoring the memory of a true community champion. As I'm sure you know by now, Bob Blazier, Mr. Crystal Lake, died last week at the age of 98. Bob spent more than a half century giving back to the community he called home. He was former District 47 School Superintendent. In honor of his achievements, the district's administrative office is named after him, and he was the longtime president of the Crystal Lake Chamber of Commerce and helped nurture generations of new business owners through the creation of the Crystal Lake Chamber Young Professionals. Bob helped found the Centegra Foundation to help support our area hospitals, the Rouse Center for the Arts Foundation, and the McHenry County College Foundation. This is a very partial list that doesn't do him justice by a long shot, and I could go on, but if I listed everything he's done for Crystal Lake and McHenry County, this meeting would stretch overnight into tomorrow morning. He outlived his wife Rosemary, whose generosity of her time and effort was equally boundless. By two months, they were married 75 years. People like Bob and Rosemary come along once in a lifetime, and they did so much for us while they were here. Sadly, also this morning, I was informed of the passing of Board Member Thomas's mother. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of these members of our community. Thank you. On Monday, January 13th, our Law and Government Committee held a special meeting with members of McHenry County's delegation in the General Assembly to discuss legislative issues in the new session that began last week. Thank you to Senators Dave Severson, Don DeWitt, and Craig Wilcox, and Representatives Steve Reich, Tom Weber, and Representatives from the Office of Joe Sosnowski for attending. On the evening of Wednesday, January 8th, I had the pleasure of attending as representatives from McHenry County and mass transit agencies spoke to the environmental defenders of McHenry County's Green Drinks event. McHenry County Division of Transportation Assistant Director Scott Hennings joined representatives from the RTA, Metra, and PACE to discuss reform initiatives before the Illinois General Assembly to expand and finance mass transit, as well as opportunities to reduce its environmental impact. Thank you to the defenders and the presenters for the informative and entertaining presentation, and thank you to Board Members Carolyn Campbell, Mike Shorten, Pamela Althoff for joining us, as well as CMAP Board Vice Chairwoman and McHenry County Representative Carolyn Schofield. And finally, this morning, I'd like to inform the county board that I will be delivering the annual State of the County address at the February 13th Committee of the whole meeting. And as a reminder for everyone in our listening audience, all county facilities will be closed this Monday, January 20th in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. This concludes my remarks. And following members and public comment, we will be recognizing Kelly Schmecker and Courtney Canope with Court Administration for their recent accomplishments, receiving a report on the launch of MCEDC's Strong Transitions Program, followed by an update from county staff on the mental health board sales tax. Do any members have comments today? Seeing none? Public comment? Oh, sorry, Pam. Ms. Althoff.
Thank you. I apologize. I was slow to hit my button. Just following up what you said, if you did not have an opportunity to listen to Law and Government, I would certainly encourage you to take a few minutes to hear some of the information provided by our elected representatives in the Senate and the House, particularly in light of comments that were made, how vulnerable our local government distributive fund monies may be in the next year, as Illinois will be looking to fill a $3 billion shortfall. So please take a few minutes and listen to some of their comments. Thank you, Mr. Bueller.
Okay, next we have public comment. Just a reminder, public comment is your opportunity to address the board. You'll have three minutes allotted in which you can speak. When the red light comes on in front of me, if you have not concluded your remarks, I would ask you to do so. First to speak would be Jeff Seibert.
Good morning, members, county board members. I'm here probably earlier than maybe expected for a petition of 2023-051, which is requesting the renewal for their CPU for gravel mining and also a cement batch for that facility. This is located out at Coral and Maple. It would be on the westerly side of Maple. The easterly side of Maple is residential and predominantly residential up and down all of Maple. I've known for quite a few years, 20 some odd years, in regards to the gravel mining operation that was approved some 20 years ago. I opposed it at that point in time, but we did not prevail. Now they have come back and they've requested a update on that zoning, and they would like to put a concrete batch plant in, which if you happen to know anything about concrete batch plants, they're not the prettiest looking buildings, and they contribute to a lot of different issues. It would be one thing if this was on Route 23, which would be expected. We have several gravel mine on Route 23. We have at least two concrete batch plants there on Route 23. There is also an asphalt batch plant as well, and it belongs there if it was anywhere. This would be abutting, a residential area, and the prevailing winds from the west would be blowing any of those silicons, et cetera, exhaust, all that material that comes off those batch plants. And I just want to know that, or let you know that, this failed at the ZBA. They denied the approval of this, but I know that we will be coming, they will be coming back and asking for some sort of consideration of moving forward on it. I know there will be a lot of other residents that will waste their opinions as well on this. I just wanted to take the time today to make sure that you're aware that next month you'll have this in front of you, and you'll have to make a decision on how you're moving forward with it. And I'm strongly opposed to it, many other residents, and it's mainly because of what a concrete batch plant does to an area. And I guess predominantly, you know, the history of this property was, they petitioned in 2020, 2003, asking for the gravel mining and an asphalt plant. The county board denied the asphalt plant, but granted a CUP for the gravel. 10 years later, 2013, they requested a renewal. No gravel had been mined from this site. They claimed hardship.
Summarize your comments, please.
So they claimed that due to the fact that they did not move forward with that due to economic times. Now we're moving forward, and they're attempting to come back and again ask for this concrete batch plant that we opposed. I thank you for the time, the consideration, and have a great day.
Kathy Baumann.
Hi. Good morning, Chairman Bueller and the county board members. My name is Kathy Baumann. I live at 8408 Maple Street in Marengo, Illinois. My family and I moved to this home in 1995, over 29 years ago, and over the past 29 years, this established residential community has grown exponentially. I'm here today regarding petition number 2023-051. This petition is requesting a renewal of a conditional use permit to extract gravel with an additional request to operate a cement ready-mix batch facility on Maple Street in Marengo, right across the road from our home and the residential neighborhood of Maple Lake shores. I would just want to give you a brief history on this property. In 2003, a similar request by the petitioner came before this board, petition number 03-08. At that time, the petitioner requested to extract gravel on this agricultural zoned parcel, as well as a ready-mix operation on the property. The board did allow for the gravel to be mined, but unanimously denied the ready-mix permit with a vote of seven to zero. From 2003 to 2013, no gravel was mined. The property remained farmland. Then again, in 2013, the petitioner returned to the county requesting a renewal. The board did renew the petitioner's cup for the next 10 years. Once again, the property continued to be farmed with no mining activity, which brings us to the present day. Today, 20-plus years later, the petitioner has returned. As I mentioned earlier, they were requesting a renewal of their cup to extract gravel with the addition of operating a cement ready-mix batch facility on the site. 20-plus years later, this area has many more homes and residents and expanded residential zoning. This area is a thriving residential community today. The residents in my community up and down Maple Street, Maple Lake shores, North and South Hill, Riley Creek, homes along West Coral, and many others strongly believe this request for a concrete batch plant is not suitable for this community. Over the next month, we look forward to sharing our comments as to why we believe the standards of this petition have not been met for a batch plant within our residential community. In the meantime, I urge you to listen or read the transcripts from the two ZBA hearings on November 21st and January 8th regarding this petition, number 2023-051, and I thank you for your time.
Joel, I'm just going to say Kay. Joel Kay. I can't read the writing there.
Good morning. My name is Joel Kuriezis, or Kay works too. I live at 20506 Delks, and I'm 119 yards from the proposed site for case number 2023-051. So I study urban forestry at the College of Natural Resources at the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, and I could list many minutes worth of reasons why this proposal would disrupt the fragile ecosystem of the Kishawaki River watershed, how it will interfere with federally protected species, or the effects it can have on air, noise, and light pollution. But since I only have a few minutes, I would just like to ask you a simple question as I continue speaking. When you think about your neighborhood, what sights and sounds come to mind? For me, it's the laughter of my nephew as we play in the front yard, the cheerful signs our neighbors put up as they sell lemonade, and the smell of barbecue drifting through the air on the Fourth of July. These are the experiences that define a community, a place of joy, connection, and family. Now imagine a very different picture. Instead of laughter, it's the relentless beeping of trucks backing up, the grating sounds of rocks being crushed, and the hiss of air brakes from concrete mixers. Those charming yellow lemonade-for-sale signs will be replaced with caution kids at play because of the increased traffic. Maple Street will now feel like Route 23, and instead of the smell of barbecue, the west winds will carry dust from the plants straight to our backyards. These are experiences that define a industrial area. As those before me have said, this is a residential area. My father and I fish in the lake behind our home every day in the summer. The memories I made, I will cherish for a lifetime. Likewise, my mother and I would watch the sunsets on our deck while our neighbors would swim in the pristine uncontaminated waters. We would see young parents on bike rides with their children, older couples walking their dogs, and countless people spending precious time with their families. These simple joys and the safety of our community are what make the people of Riley Township call this place home. I'm not here to plead my individual case, but to speak on behalf of my neighbors and our shared future. This is not a "not in my backyard" issue. This does not belong in anybody's backyard. We are asking you, as our representatives, to protect the integrity of this community. Your role is to stand up for the people you serve, to preserve the quality of the life that brought us all here, ensure that decisions prioritize health, safety, and well-being over industrial convenience and the gain of one man. So please hear us and help preserve the place that we love and call home. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We'll move on to reports and presentations. First up this morning, we have trial court administrator Dan Wallace and his sidekick Honey to provide, recognize Kelly Schmecker and Courtney Canope in appreciation for outstanding community impact.
Good morning. This is one of those fun opportunities that we get to come and talk about the excellent people that we get to work with, and I think there's an important distinction there. Notice I didn't say that they work for me. We work together. And so, oh, come on around. You're not going to hide in the back. They had, they had no idea this was coming. I got them here under false pretenses. Here, I'll let you hold the keys. First, I would like to introduce Kelly Schmecker. She is our Director of Special Projects, and this is Kelly Canope. She is our Finance Coordinator for the court system. The work that these two young ladies have done over the last year is remarkable. I say this very bluntly, and I have no doubt that the work that the two of you have done not only will save lives, they will have a lasting impact on this community. They have secured, between the two of them, over $4 million in grant funds to expand the drug court, the mental health court, our DUI court, and also a new program, our assisted outpatient treatment program, that is going to be looking to divert individuals to treatment rather than getting involved in the court system to be petitioned for mental health services. I can't say, I, I could not be prouder of the work that the two of you have done. I am so pleased. We wanted to just spend a couple of minutes recognizing you for your excellence in your work, because it's not me. It's not even Honey. It's, it's what they've done. So we'd like to present you with a couple plaques. And I will read this. "In recognition of your exceptional dedication and leadership in securing over $4 million in grant funding to enhance the drug court, mental health court, and assisted outpatient programs, your tireless efforts have significantly expanded access to critical services, fostering recovery, accountability, and hope for individuals and families facing mental health and addiction challenges. Through your vision and commitment, you have profoundly impacted the well-being of our community, creating opportunities for transformation and paving the way for a healthier, safer future. Your work reflects the highest standards of public service that will benefit countless lives. The 22nd Judicial Circuit in the county of McHenry extends its sincere appreciation for your outstanding work and steadfast commitment to serving our community with excellence and compassion."
We have a quick photo in front of the county board, please. Thank you. I'd be more than happy, and let's have Honey up there.
I just wanted to say thank you, because it really takes a village, and you have all been a wonderful village to work with, especially Dan and Judge Feeder. They, I'm pretty sure have never told me no. So I appreciate that. They let me do what I love, and I love what I do. So thank you to everyone. Thank you, thank you.
You all so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, next we have a presentation of the Strong Transitions Program presented by Mark Picos, who's the Director of the MCEDC.
Good morning, and that's a tough act to follow. I wish that we could have Honey up with us as well. But no service dog for the MCEDC. This morning, I'm joined by my partners in the Strong Transition Program, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good morning, Catherine Jones. I serve as the Associate Vice President of Workforce Development at McHenry County College.
I'm John Mink. I'm with the SBDC with McHenry County College.
The Advanced McHenry County Grant Program has provided us an opportunity to develop a program that will enhance business retention, preserve local jobs, and maintain the diverse economy in McHenry County. If you'll humor me for a second, I would like you to envision four business owners that you personally know. And notice I say active business owners, not retired, not former. So envision those four business owners. Paint the picture in your mind. Statistically, on a national scale, two of the four business owners that you pictured are above the age of 55. Is that the case for you? Maybe yes, maybe no. For some of them, perhaps there's even three business owners, perhaps some 100%. Yeah. And additionally, 3.5 of the business owners that you envisioned do not have a written transition plan, and that 0.5 is probably because someone has half of a written transition plan. And the eye-opening part is that statistically, over half of those business owners are going to experience an involuntary business transfer attributed to one of the five Ds, being death, disability, divorce, disagreement, or distress. Now, some of you are business owners. We've all experienced our share of distress, right? And we've all experienced some of those other Ds. So why is that important that at a national scale, we're seeing this, this growing business transition rate? Catherine, would you share a little bit, please?
So I'm going to have you continue to imagine those business owners that you are thinking about. Think of the jobs that are attached to those business entities. And so, we talk a lot about what is our responsibility to maintain, preserve jobs, make sure that we are growing our workforce. We must be also then involved in this process of transition and ownership. So the idea that we can only think about the wealth transfer, is there wealth transfer involved in this? Absolutely, there's wealth transfer. But the imperative for us as a county is to be focusing on the job, maintaining those jobs.
And speaking of wealth transfer on the national scale, in the next 10 years, it's projected that $14 trillion worth of business equity could be transferred. That's, that's accounting for 73% of privately held companies in the United States. Business owners' exits have accelerated and are expected to increase. Just for economic context, the US GDP is 28.78 trillion. The program that we have developed, again, with the assistance of McHenry County, ARPA Advanced McHenry County Grant Funds, leverages a two-pronged approach to providing business owners and business buyers with solutions in McHenry County. The, the transition planning side takes existing business owners with the intent to sell in approximately a 10-year period, but it is, it's not restricted to that, and it provides them with one-on-one discreet exit planning counseling. On the other side, on the buy side, we are creating a non-credit eight-week workshop, which is a cohort-based program, and it's an interactive program that prepares learners to buy and operate an established company. Now, John, how many times do you have someone come into your offices and say, I am going to hang my own shingle, I am going to start a brand-new stump grinding, tree trimming, whatever business, right?
108%.
108% of the time. And, and one thing that, that we noticed is categorically that these entrepreneurs, or would-be entrepreneurs, wantrepreneurs, if you will, aren't acknowledging the fact that there are existing businesses with business owners who are desiring to transition out. Not to get into the weeds too deeply, but it is extremely challenging to go out and seek capital or funding to start your own business, right? It takes a ton of collateral. It takes a ton of effort. It's not nearly as challenging to buy an existing business with a built-in cash flow. And we've identified a gap in McHenry County as well as, as the rest of the country that we think that we can fill by training entrepreneurs to look at that from the perspective of becoming business buyers. And as you can see with this two-pronged system, someday, the twain shall meet, right? It's our hope, and you know, we can't, we can lead the horses to water, but we may not be able to, to make them drink, but it's our hope that by educating and inspiring an entrepreneur, we are going to create a viable transition for one of those existing business owners, right? And in the process of creating this, we will inspire the entrepreneurs to create a resume that a business owner could read through and say, hey, I think that this person is a perfect successor. One point that I want to make is that not all, and by and large, most business transfers aren't going to be to a third party, right? There's a lot of instances where they're transferring to a family member or transferring to an existing employee, and, and we want to give that credence as well. Our advisors will take a holistic approach to the business, identify what the business profile is, and make sure that their profile is, and make sure that they're coaching the business owner through their desired So our objectives with this and the roadmap that we're laying out is to enhance the advisory abilities of McHenry County. And John, I'm going to let you talk a little bit about the advisors that we are bringing onto the program.
Sure. So specifically, I spent years running a global supply chains in the private sector, coming into the role, and I got to work with businesses in the county here. But what we need to do is we're bringing in a team of advisors that have experience in transition, either they were forced into it, or they were part of an organization that had to go in and transition businesses from one to the other. So we have a couple of advisors already lined up that have agreed to it. One's very, one's very specific in being able to work financial, financial metrics and financial viability of the business and develop what the business would be from a acquisition perspective, what would be the target price. There's other advisors that we have brought on that are seasoned, seasoned advisor that went through, had to become the CEO of this company to work through its transition plan. So we're building up this bench, and this is not a specific individual advisor that's working on a specific function, but advisors that have a macro view of helping transition. So with that, we're bringing in a very experienced set of advisors that have been through this for themselves. And we're continuing to build that bench, but I've got two lined up, got one more on the, one more on the docket here to be lined up very soon. We'll be training and training these advisors at the end of this month.
And likewise, with the Entrepreneurship Through Acquisition Program, we'll have a core educator who facilitates the class, but we'll bring in quite a few subject matter experts in areas that they can expand on. And these would be accountants, attorneys, business valuation professionals who can provide context into, into what they're teaching.
And this curriculum is developed in three different chunks. One is the foundation, just what is this entrepreneurship through acquisition, getting the footprint? The second section is more deal-related. How is it going to be structured? Where is the capital coming from? And then the third part that I think really differentiates from what we see across the country in entrepreneurship through acquisition is how do you grow a business? So not just leaving somebody like, here's the deal, off you go, but staying with them through that growth phase.
Oops, I think I went too far. There we go. And you know, one thing that I want to make a point of is that we are intent on building this program sustainably. We hope that this is something that exists and grows in McHenry County well beyond the ARPA period. And one way that we're doing that is charging a nominal fee for, for the utilization. For the, the business, the transition advising, the cost in 2025 will be $650, which is an incredible discount offset by the Advanced McHenry County program. And then for the ETA workshop, which has a target value of $1,899, we're going to be able to offer that at $189 per learner for the eight-week course. And like I said, that will help us continue to build this program, bring on well-educated advisors, and answer some of the questions that come up with real wraparound services. Additionally, it's important for accountability of the participant. When you receive something for free, it's devalued. And you say, "Well, I don't think I really need to do my homework because this is no cost to me." So we understand that it's important, but at the same time, we want this program to be accessible to everyone. So if there's a barrier to entry with cost, we'll certainly, we'll certainly continue to work with them. I mentioned wraparound services in a sustainable fashion, and I want to mention that it's our goal, and one of the reasons that this partnership exists, is so that those, the participants and the clients and the learners can eventually utilize the services that the MCEDC and the SBDC offer. As you know, the MCC's primary, MCEDC's primary focus is primary businesses, those that produce more than McHenry County can consume. John and the SBDC provide services to any business with fewer than 500 employees. So we are really trying to capture the full spectrum of businesses with this. So I'll allow some time for questions if that's appropriate, and I want you to have access to the information form by going to this QR code or entering that Strong Transitions web link, bit.ly/strongtransitions. You'll be able to enter a form, say, "I'm interested in learning more," and then you'll be on the distribution list. We are planning an informational session mid-February where we're going to bring in some experienced transition planners who have gone through ETA, and they're going to talk a little bit about their experience and what the program is going to look like. Everybody got that? Okay, I'll leave it up for, I'll leave it up while we answer questions, and then we'll put our contact information up as well. Does there any, any questions that I can answer? Member Greeno, go ahead.
Is there going to be a differentiation between members of the MCEDC and non-members?
Mikes.
Sorry. Am I on? Okay. I don't even know what I was thinking. So personal today. Is there going to be a differentiation in the pricing between MCEDC members and non?
Investors, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Scala.
Does the program, so, you know, I'm under 55, would still like to transition at some point, but does the program offer a roadmap on how to set your business up for maximizing potential profitability out of it? Meaning, you know, there's a, typically speaking, it's a five-year process to sell a business in the sense that you want to set your business up. And so is that part of it in the sense that all the different things that a business owner needs to do in order to set that up? And then also, on the flip side, you know, perhaps because of one of the five Ds or several of the five Ds that you mentioned, they don't have the ability to set it up. And so the transitional side is, is either contracting with someone to set it up or to perhaps bring in one of your future entrepreneurs to help in that transition to set it up with, you know, kind of like a strike agreement involved.
I'm going to say a yes and, and hit part of that. So what we typically see in a business transition is maximizing the value to the exiting business owner, but oftentimes that does not consider time horizon. So what if we get that five-to-10-year time horizon, and we're looking at maximizing exit value not for a particular point, but over the life cycle? So that allows us to do some more creative financing options with the existing business owner that actually maximizes their return in the end.
Okay.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, and the essential part of the transition curriculum is called Built to Sell, right? Creating the business. And, and you know, one thing I want to make clear, we put data up there about businesses, business owners who are aging. It's not exclusive to them, and if someone who is, you know, 25, 35 says, "Yeah, I think it would be really important at this stage so that I can move on to the next thing," we're absolutely willing to build that roadmap for them. It's not, you know, the problem is what it is, and this is a solution to that problem, but it's not exclusive to that demographic.
And what about, so in the, in the conduit, so you're going to be the conduit between potential business sellers and potential business buyers, in essence. So if the business buyer, I mean, like, when I bought my business, I was in my twenties, didn't have a pot to piss in, you know? Had to get the SBA involved to try and float the loan, and even that, you know, my wife was ready to shoot me. So I guess part of the, part of the situation is, is, you know, angel investors or something along those lines in order to help that transition. Because naturally, if you're maximizing the value of a business, that makes it that much more difficult for-
For the buyer.
For the buyer.
Absolutely.
So, you know, it's a, it's a, I don't want to say touchy situation, but it's a situation where you're increasing the value so that someone can maximize it, but you're also creating a larger burden of entry for the buyer side of it. So how do you, how does this class or how does this program kind of deal with that teeter totter?
Yeah. Beyond the, the core curriculum that we're proposing, it's important that the prevalence of a case-by-case basis is there, right? Oftentimes, and this is, again, you know, more national perspective, oftentimes, the perceived value of the existing business owner is way off base. And part of our responsibility is to get them to a accurate value. You mentioned SBA. SBA lends on a professional, professionally completed valuation, right? Just like loan to value on when you purchase your house or whatever. And so a key part of the transition advising is helping that business owner understand what that value might be, what factors are going to affect it over the next five, over the time horizon in which they want to sell, and what a buyer realistically is going to be capable of. There may be instances where our advisors go, "Hey, this, we have provided you as much information as you can, but unless you get more realistic about the perceived value, you're not going to be able to make that transition." Because at the end of the day, we know that the demographic that's taking the ETA class is not going to be capitalized enough to write a $2.5 million check. And that's what's important about incorporating the SBDC, which is partially funded by the SBA, is that they not only have the internal capability to evaluate for SBA loans, but they have the relationships and the financial network to make sure that those lines are connected. Anything to add?
Nice, said it very well.
Thank you. Coffee's kicking in.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. And once again, we want to, we want to express our extreme gratitude. This was, you know, an idea that we've, we've had for a long time, and truly, the Advanced McHenry County dollars are what is going to make it possible. We could do this from a grassroots, one-by-one case basis, but this is going to make it impactful in McHenry County. So we're very grateful. Our contact information is up there, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have an update on the mental health sales tax. County Administrator Peter Austin and CFO Carrie Wise.
Thank you. We'll be quick. Three presentations is a lot for a morning, so. You know, I think it was the November Finance Committee meeting, shortly after, there was a recognition that vehicles or licensed vehicles were not going to be part of the mental health sales tax. We had a discussion at the Finance Committee, and Carrie and I very publicly committed to building a model with some scenario tool for the Mental Health Board. But we wanted to get through the development of the 25 budget and get through the holidays, and we've done that. Carrie's built a really neat tool, and all we want to do today is share that tool and show how it can be used. You know, we shared this tool with Leonetta about a week and a half ago, and I think she recognizes its value, and there's different ways that it can be used. The, I guess you just have to acknowledge, you know, are we, are we disappointed that the vehicle sales are not part of the mental health sales tax? Absolutely. You know, and I'm disappointed in my role in, in, in that air. There was lots of people involved, but I'm sorry it happened. But, you know, I still feel like two things can be true. We can be disappointed that those sales aren't in there, but this can still be, and still is, a better tool for funding mental health sales tax, or for, for funding mental health services. And these numbers, I think, I feel like they just kind of speak for themselves. I'm going to let Carrie walk through a little bit how, how the tool can be manipulated. But right now, you know, the Mental Health Board went ahead with about a $12 million expenditure budget for this year. And I think as we, as you look at this tool, you can see they're going to be able to stay right at that $12 million number and grow in the years to come. And we shared this with Leonetta, she had a little bit of reaction that they might want to spend a little bit more on the personnel side. They can. The Mental Health Board is in control of the dollars leaving the house, and the dollars that are going to come in the house are going to grow year over year over year. So I'm rambling. I know there's going to be more questions, but so Carrie, can you show them how it works?
Sure. So kind of the idea in building this was to keep it simple. So it's, this is similar to what I look at with the General Fund when we're trying to project out multiple years, which I think everyone knows there's always a lot of change. So the idea is to make it flexible, but still high level. So it's set up with 2024. It's not quite close out, but it's close enough where I think that's going to be a pretty good projected number. And so if you look at the, the top line, property tax and sales tax, we talked a lot about the, kind of the double tax, because they're getting the property tax revenue this year, and they're also getting five months of sales tax.
That's the number.
Yeah. So that really gives them a good boost to their fund balance, and that's what we talked about a little bit with Leonetta, about how you use that to kind of make up some of the numbers and expenses that we, that have to change because of the projections. So also with this model, as Pete mentioned, it's, it's really their tool. They can make whatever changes they want, whatever assumptions they want, and then it will change. And I know when I do presentations for you guys, we talk a lot about months of reserve. I think that's a little bit easier to kind of focus on versus, you know, having $10 million. It gives you an idea, you know, if they have about a million dollars of expense each month, you know, looking at it with how many months of reserve, especially high level, is just a better tool for them. So then the 2025, that's their budget, which was approved in November. And then the annual percentage increases out here, those numbers are built based off of the 2025 budget. And again, if you change, like 3.5%, so I think that's a pretty, it may be a little high, but as we get more and more months of sales tax in, we can make, they can make changes to it. But that's really the kind of growth we've seen in the county sales tax numbers. So again, they can change it, it will change all the numbers. Also, as Pete mentioned, you know, if there's, in 2026, they want to add a capital project, you know, they can go in and make those changes, and it'll change the fund balance. This is just the Mental Health Board Fund, which is Fund 211 on the county books. It is, the opioid settlement fund is not included in any of these projections at all. That's in its own special fund.
And what is that amount? I mean, is it approximately a couple million dollars that's been committed, right?
Yes, and that's been, so the Mental Health Board, we moved that fund into Department 25, so they can really control what's coming in and out of that fund. It has been a little inconsistent, I think, based on how we, or what we thought we were going to get initially. So that's why we're really looking at it outside. Like, I think it, it can impact these expenditures because maybe something that was going to come out of this fund, they can come out of opioid, but it's just really another tool that the Mental Health-
That would certainly be additive to what we're looking at here.
Correct, yes. And again, the, the kind of the red light, green light at the bottom is based off of a three-month reserve, which I think because they're switching from a property tax, which comes in twice a year, to sales tax that comes in-
Twelve times a year.
Yes, every month, very consistent, pretty much the same day. But again, that's a decision that the Mental Health Board can talk about, you know, they can see the impacts of, you know, how that will make changes as they go out.
And so when you see the red there, that's, that's a, that's what could happen, but the Mental Health Board is in charge of this-
Yes.
Situation, then they don't need to ever let it get to red.
Right. It turns to red-
And this will help them not get there.
Yeah. If, if they continue on the path and all these projections are 100% accurate and they don't make any changes. So really, it's, it's to give them a tool for their planning in the out years.
And I know, you know, when, when the, when the reality initially set in that licensed vehicles weren't going to be hard to tax, there was a lot of anxiety and angst, and there was a lot of public discussion in it. And again- And again, Carrie and I, we wanted to just get through the budget process and kind of catch our breath and kind of build this model, really get our arms around what was the size of the issue. And I think this is what it does. You know, this gives us an idea of the size of the revenue coming in. And I think, as I can, we can be both disappointed, but confident that we've got a good tool here moving forward. We've got a tool that's better for funding mental health services. And again, I'm so appreciative of all the people that worked to get that sales tax passed. And I hope that they still are proud of their work to get this passed, because this is a better tool. Questions?
Mr. Scala.
So, thank you very much for putting this model together and a tool that the staff and executive director can utilize over there. You know, it's... I will speak for myself. It's a disappointing chart, right? It shows a pathway forward, which is what we had said that we want to do. It's disappointing for me in the sense that, you know, when I look at the client services line, you know, to me, that's the most important line on the chart, right? Because that's the money going out to perform the services that, you know, we as a county need for the patients. And I think we all collectively had hoped that that number would be higher, based on, you know, all the things that you've already talked about. You know, so if I was looking at county budget, and, you know, Carrie presented this at the Finance Meeting, I'd be having some issues, because I'd be like, okay, well, this isn't a sustainable model, right? I mean, that's the issue with what is being pointed out here. And yes, what I like about this model is the fact that it empowers the people at the Mental Health Board to be able to make decisions that can impact this model, so it is sustainable going forward. I think it's a model that, long-term, will serve the clients in the county much better than the annual fight that we have here amongst the 18 of us to try and figure out what a levy is going to be given to the Mental Health Board. You know, that was always problematic. That was always a political hot potato, and didn't really serve the clients of the community very well at all. So, I think it's, although it's disappointing for me personally to see these numbers, I appreciate the fact that you were able to put it together and give them the tools that they can use to try and put together a long-term program and solution for the clients that need it. So, I appreciate that very much. And I think this is something that, you know, I know you guys are dedicated to continuing to help them. So, this isn't here, here's an Excel spreadsheet, you know, thanks a lot, see you later. You know, I know that your door is always open for them to come in, whether it's the Board or the Executive Director, whoever it is, to continue to try and help them. So, if they take this model and they want to run some scenarios, and you guys are open to try and help them, you know, get through that. So, I appreciate it. And naturally, I think their work is just beginning, right? Because now they have a tool that they can utilize. And so, now, it's going to make it upon them to make some policy decisions in order to have a sustainable model. And again, how many month reserve is okay or not okay? And, you know, one of the things that this doesn't have in it, which we know happens, is there is allocations that come back to Mental Health Board, but that varies every single year. So, that's a variable. So, there's always some amount of money that comes back just because it wasn't able to be spent by the providers. So, that's a small potato compared to this, but every dollar counts.
It is a reality, and monies that go unspent every year, they go back into the pot.
Right. So, thank you.
I think just to build on that a little, you know, they, the Mental Health Board obviously has control of all of their expenses. But I broke it out in between admin personnel, admin non-personnel, and then the client services. So, another scenario that they can look at is opportunity maybe within some of those admin costs, you know. It's, this is right now built on, they'll continue the same amount of admin cost. But, you know, if there's opportunity to move that, reduce... You know, and we can always, we always help with that, because, you know, we're good at, you know, allocating limited resources to the best possible use.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you. The $10 million in 2025, is that based on the current run rate of sales tax collected?
Yeah.
That, yeah, that's...
That's like living at the last three years and just...
No, no. Based on what they're collecting, they've collected over the last number of months. Is that $10 million realistic?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we actually just received the October distribution. And the one thing with sales taxes is it's very seasonal, as you would expect. So, I'm thinking, it was $828,000. So, the highest that we've received of the four months. And I expect November will be even higher. So, that would put even the 2024 projection number, you know, closer to $4.1 million. So, I think the 10 is a really conservative number, but definitely realistic.
And then, the state of Illinois provides sales tax. They look out into the future. These numbers line up with what they would show as far as sales tax collected in the out years?
So, the Department of Revenue doesn't provide projections going forward. They provide, I think in this case, it was three prior years. You can kind of get a percent increase.
So, these match up then with that? Okay.
I think the three prior years are like 9.1, 9.4, 9.7.
Okay.
That's where you just go to 10.
Sure. Okay. Good. Good. And then, from an accounting standpoint, what should the Mental Health Board have as a reserve fund? I see your projections here, but in a perfect world, what would that, you know, what would an organization like that reserve fund balance? What should that be from a good accounting practice?
So, that's, I think, just based on our discussions with Leonetta, we had a slight disagreement. It's really, I think, what the Board wants to talk about. Right now, it's their policy is five months.
Okay.
Their policy is mirroring our own general fund policy and getting predicated on two distributions a year. And that's, I just think five months is well in excess of what...
Well, that's why I'm asking from strictly from an accounting standard. Three months?
Yeah, a little conversation just in passing with Lindsay, their Chair of the Finance Committee, and she suggested four right out of the gate. You know, they've got time to make that decision.
Okay.
And we, again, as Mike said, we'll be working with them hand in hand as we begin to develop a real trend of what's coming in, and how much of their fund reserve do they want to use each year?
Okay. Thank you.
Because it is expected that they're going to use a good chunk of fund reserve over the next four years, because they got a lot right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Greenough.
Thank you. I know that a lot of work went in on the county's side, putting together the model before the Mental Health Board made this decision. You know, the county board basically saying, here, this is, you know, if you would like to have this option, you know, to take it to the public for the sales tax. I also would assume that the Mental Health Board had one or two people run through their projected models to compare, so their eyes were wide open going into this. So, we can all trust that, because that was the decision that they made to go forward. So, that was just one thing that I wanted to just put out there as the premise that I believe we're all working on, is that everybody did this of their own free will accord, doing their own research, and with information to make a decision. So, agreed. So, the Mental Health Board did their work, we did our work, and a decision was made to take this to the public.
I can't speak to the degree of effort...
We did our work.
I know. So, I'm just saying, you know, that that's the assumption that I know that I am working from. So, that's just one statement, you know. So, that this is, this spreadsheet is not a surprise. This is not a surprise to the Mental Health Board. I mean, they can see it. They could...
No, it's not a surprise. And honestly, in November, with the back of a sheet of paper, I kind of sketched it out, and it really looked very similar to this.
Okay. So, that's just, you know, thank you that you've got it in such a formal fashion, and it's excellent. I love spreadsheets. My second observation is, I think it would help the Board, just for edification. And I know that now may not be the time. But looking at the percentage of payroll burden for the organization, just to understand, are we talking about true administration? Or are they in the, do they actually get involved in providing services to constituents? Because generally, this would be considered a very high administrative, you know, payroll burden for an organization of 10 to 15 million. And so, I think it would just help us settle in our minds that they have a very good reason for holding personnel costs that high. So, I just want to get that out there for thought and consideration, and perhaps, you know, if we can find out, is it purely administrative overhead? Are they actually providing services? So, I know that we probably don't know that right now, but I wanted to ask.
I don't believe they are providing services. That model has been kind of inverted from a decade ago, when they had 40-plus staff members. They are truly a pass-through monitoring organization at this point, not a service providing organization.
So, they have some opportunities and things that they can look at and make decisions on too, so that could be helpful. Thank you. Great job.
Ms. Althoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As one of those people, along with my colleague to my left, that was intimately engaged in reaching out to people to support the referendum, I too, you know, was disappointed. And it's nice to hear from our Finance Chair, as well as from Administration, that we will continue to work with the Mental Health Board to ensure that we're providing the best possible services to our constituents in the field of mental health. I also want you to know that we don't stop there. I've had numerous conversations with members of the Mental Health Board, as well as Leo. And we are also investigating the possibility of changing legislation, which potentially, not immediately, but potentially, may be able to change the ability of the county to collect those vehicle sales tax. I'm still trying to figure out why it was eliminated. There's got to be a reason, maybe 20 years ago. But that effort is ongoing, and that's another avenue that we can pursue to see if we can't collect additional revenue for that. So, I just want everybody to be aware, we're not just sitting back and manipulating money that we're getting. I shouldn't say manipulate, but looking at monies that we're currently receiving, we are doing a little bit more proactive activities as well. So, thank you.
Ms. Benhoff.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I have a couple of questions. This, thank you both for preparing this spreadsheet. It looks very dreary to me. I'm most concerned with the cash reserves. And there, I have two questions. This bottom line here, this shows the number of months of cash reserve that the Mental Health Board will have left if they go with the projected budget that you have listed above?
Yes.
Okay. And Member Collins touched on something that was on my mind, about how many months are recommended for cash reserve. And I think, Peter, you said that, you know, it's really, you kind of differ on your opinions of what that should be.
I think we, out of the gate, everything everybody understands, it doesn't need to be five months.
Okay.
Can it be three? I think so. Can it be four? Can it be three and a half? You know, we have time to make those decisions, but it doesn't need to be five.
Okay. So, it may not need to be five, but building on that... Okay. It does not need to be. We'll take your word for that, Peter. It doesn't need to be five. It can be three. My other concern is...
Previously, money only came in in June and September.
Right.
Twice a year. So, you had to have reserves to hold over. But now, money is coming in every month, month after month of the year.
I understand that, but there's another reason why you want cash reserves. It's good for emergencies like this. So, my other concern, I guess, is that this budget doesn't allow for any expansion of services.
The 25 budget, they increased client services. There was an increase to client services. I don't know...
Well, I'm specifically looking at going forward, because going forward, you know, in many conversations that, you know, I have had with Leo, and we've had with the Mental Health Board, I know there's a desire to expand services beyond what we are offering right now. And if we're doing this, we're not going to be able to. So, thank you, Member Althoff, for maybe thinking about how we can get additional funds from the state for the sales taxes for automobiles. That would be great if we can do it, because we went forward with this thinking that we were going to get $12 million. That was what we were looking at.
We weren't sure.
That was a projection based on the sales tax that the county receives, which includes vehicle tax.
Okay. Yeah. I understand that. So, thank you.
Ms. Campbell.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just make it quick, because I think there's been a lot of comments that I would agree with. And I appreciate Member Scala for his comments regarding the client services line, and also Member Althoff for recognizing and acknowledging the work that has been done by a lot of people to get this over the finish line. So, I do think there are a lot of people who are very disappointed, because they put their own reputations on the line to get out and actually convinced their boards to support the measure, and then spent a lot of time convincing people in the public. And so, what they would have done something differently if they had known the numbers, I don't know. I understand all the information that's been provided. I appreciate everything that's been done. In terms of reserves, yes, they are going to be paid. I'm not going to argue about how many months. I think that is something that needs to be investigated, and would not think that a definitive answer should be given right now. Yes, they're going to get money every month, but how much you have in reserve also depends on the stability of the revenue source. The county has, is in a very good position in terms of revenue generation, even though it's paid, the property tax is paid out twice a year. They have different things that they can rely on. Property tax is seen as one of the most stable forms of revenue. When you go to a sales tax, not so much, but it has grown over time. We've seen that. So, it's not, I'm not saying it's going to fluctuate, it could be, you know, up and down, all over the place. Historically, it's been going up, but there's still some risk there in terms of there's a downturn in the economy. But I just wanted to throw that out there. In terms of what Member Althoff is saying, I think that there are people who are still committed to making sure that the Mental Health Board is supported in addition to looking at legislation that might bring that vehicle sales tax back into the fold. We do know that we've been actively pursuing the money that's available at the state level to fund the social worker program. There's some money out there. Our Sheriff's Department brought this type of program up several years ago, and yet, we're not receiving funding for the social worker program that is now being given to other counties in the state. So, we're actively working on seeing if that money is available, which could take some pressure off of the Mental Health Board, not necessarily withdrawing the funding altogether, but that could help. So, I think we are looking at different options as well to make sure that this goes well in the future.
Thank you for your hard work putting this together. I know it was a lot to do, and, you know, I think it really kind of lays out that there is a path forward that can be followed. And I appreciate staff's commitment to continue working with the Mental Health Board to address their perceived problems. You know, sometimes I think that, you know, this is just the revenue side that we're talking about here, albeit not including opioid funds or any additional grants they may get with their grant writer that they currently newly have. But on the expense side of things, I mean, I think that there's certainly opportunities where we can continue to work with the Mental Health Board to find efficiencies. You know, a lot of times, especially around transportation, we see duplicative services across the county and the robust transportation system that we have with MC Ride, now the Uber program, and the bus routes. I think that transportation would be a compelling area to really approach the Mental Health Board and see where we can work together to reduce their expenses on the travel side, especially when it comes to the specialty court travel program that they have in place. So, I think that there's, you know, potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings that could be had in those areas, and would put them in an even better position than what they are today. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're right on point there, Mike. So, Scott's hearing you. So, thank you. So thank you.
Okay, on to new business. Do any members have items from next Tuesday's agenda they'd like to remove for discussion? Mr. Kearns.
I would just like to be registered as a no vote on the 10A2 on the solar farm. I don't want to pull it if I can be accepted as a no vote.
Okay. Mr. Scala.
B16B23.
I'd like to echo Mr. Kearns' sentiment on 10A2. I'd like to be registered as a no vote.
Ms. Greeno.
With the two comments on 10A2, are we pulling that for discussion? If not, I would like to pull it for discussion.
If you would like it for discussion, we'll discuss.
Okay.
You do. Okay. Seeing no others, Ms. Greeno, 10A2? Oh, Eric, go ahead. Sorry.
Sorry, 16B222.
Okay, Ms. Greeno, 10A2?
I know in the past we've discussed that this is an administrative process, and we have no control on the solar farms. And I'm wondering, has there been any progress in removing this and putting it into just a pass-through administrative and stop having it come to the board for a vote on the solar issues?
Adams is not coming up. Wrong one. Go ahead.
All right, sorry. It's still in the discussion phase, I'll say it that way. I mean, we've had meetings with the state task force, solar task force, which has brought through legislative updates that would really, our concerns, and then other counties in the collar counties, and then downstate, really swept together a whole bunch of various concerns that hope to be addressed, but it's still following and it's still adhering to that public hearing process. So the state law hasn't really wavered in any of their modifications to that, at least in my purview.
Well, and please correct me if I'm working on any wrong assumptions, but because we can't tailor these agreements to what we consider the benefit of our county, so then many of us are put in a situation of voting no, which potentially puts us into a litigation situation, which we'll lose. I mean, it just, and then to vote yes on something that you're opposed to, it puts us in a very difficult situation, and I, for one, would like to see it stop for one way or another, either that we actually could design for our county what works best, or stop putting ourselves into a situation of potential litigation, which nobody wants to do either. So it is kind of crazy. So if we could stop the crazy, that would be great.
Ms. Altough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Greeno, you put it perfectly. It kind of puts us in a catch-22. I don't believe, unfortunately, that the county has the authority currently to waive that process, the way it's written in state statute, but I will have you know that, again, there is a task force that Mr. Wallin referenced, that actually calls, if you can't make changes, whatever authority, because municipalities are behind this as well. If we have no ability to make any changes or requirements for solar farms, then take it away from that unit of local government who is supposedly supposed to be having the public hearing and regulating. So there is efforts at the state level to do just that. So again, I just don't believe that the county currently has the authority to waive the public hearing and get us out of it.
Mr. Kunkel.
Of course, I'm in favor of the county getting its rights renewed, where we actually have say over this. But just to pile on crazy, I want to be registered as a no with this, too, please.
Mr. Shorten.
I've stated in the past that I was in favor of having these removed from the consent agenda, and legality issue, obviously, is a concern, but I'd like them to remain on the agenda. I think that this is an overreach from the state government, and it does put us in a difficult position, but ultimately, if we pull it from the agenda and no longer have visibility to it, we're acquiescing, and I'm not prepared to acquiesce at this point. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell.
Yeah, just real quickly, and I do appreciate, because I think that some efforts are ongoing in terms of trying to get back, you know, our ability to, I think we were talking about this in long government, our ability to go back and have decommissioning costs reevaluated more frequently, maybe increasing the amount of, that has to be held. We used to do 150%, now it's 100%. And so some of those things, I think, do have to happen, and we do have to feel like we have some control. I do want to caution, I think that I would also appreciate it if we are, I know that the reason for this is largely because of a more overarching objection to how this is being handled, but I would hope that we would also look at some of these projects on their own merits, and whether or not that, you know, are we throwing out a good project, or are we, you know, the property owner, this is an opportunity for them to use their land that the way they feel they could get the best return? Are we taking that right away from them? And I know that this particular company has made a lot of efforts to reach out to people and to find out, is there anything else that they can be doing that would help make the decision easier? And they are willing to make some concessions and have adjusted with setback and so forth. So I would hope that, in addition to pushing for our rights for local control, which I think is important, that we would also not turn away a project that would be helpful to the community. Thank you.
Mr. Kearns.
I too would like to see them remain on the agendas. I do think with a new administration in Washington DC and the federal government, that we're going to see some changes in the funding for these sites in the subsidy, and that some of the things we feared are going to come true when they become nonprofitable, if that does occur. And that's all a what-if, and so I'm only bringing that up. But the other thing that I'd like to acknowledge, if my information is correct, and Adam, you can, there is some legal lawsuits pending right now on this with other counties toward the state, or at least one of them. And hopefully, they succeed, and then we can gain our rights back. So there is legal, because they did fail one, and they're being sued. And so hopefully, the county succeeds.
Correct, yeah, that's Will County, that situation is going on.
Mr. Kunkel.
Thanks for the second run. Yeah, I would like to clarify to board members, my opposition is to putting these on, which they're commercial entities, on agricultural property, not in opposition to solar panels themselves.
Ms. Campbell, last one on this.
I know, I appreciate it. No, and I do know that there's an argument, and I do understand that in terms of, seen as a loss of agricultural land, I do know that people oftentimes feel, too, that these solar panels on there, once they're on, they'll never go back to agriculture. I know that's also an argument. When, in terms of the use of the land, I mean, part of it is an investment, and other developments are permanent, so you might be looking at a housing development or something else. So it's first, in some cases, that doesn't necessarily mean by rejecting a solar panel or field that you're going to then just keep it in agriculture necessarily, but anyway, thank you.
Okay, 16B23, Mr. Scala.
I just pulled this as an informational thing. So at your place, you see in front of you a fund balance and reserve policy. The committee, finance committee, thought it was important that all of you have this policy in print that you could put in your drawers, so that when we're having budget discussions and other financial discussions, you could have this at your ready-to-look-at and review.
Thank you. 16B222, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you. I guess I was just looking for more information on this. One of my concerns is we're spending $11 million to expand the Woodstock rail yard location. You know, these are RTA sales tax dollars that can be used for, you know, law enforcement purposes. I know the, you know, obviously, we have ongoing concerns with the Safety Act and the financial requirements it puts on us. And so, you know, at a time where, you know, public transit ridership, we hear from Metro and these other organizations that public transit ridership in general is down, we're looking at, you know, 30 to 40% down compared to pre-COVID. I looked at the US Census Bureau's data, only 2% of the county is actually using public transit of any sort, whether bus, or metro, you know, any other method. It begs the question, is there a better purpose for this $11 million? I know it is spread out over, you know, several years, but I guess, what is the goal of expanding services when ridership's down 40%? And is that the best use of our tax dollars?
Yeah, and I don't want to, obviously, provide an opinion. I'll provide some facts and some details on the project itself.
Well, Scott, please do provide your opinion, because I genuinely am curious.
Well, I'll say that this project was first identified over 10 years ago in our 2040 transportation plan. It was one of our top three projects that the county board decided that they wanted to support, not only politically but financially. And so this has been in our five-year program for over 10 years. It was then re-designated as a priority project in our 2050 transportation plan that was approved last year. And it was passed through transportation and finance and audit on routine consent agenda. So this is a project that has a long history, and we're finally at the point where the county is ready to commit some funding to the project, to actually move it into that next stage, which currently, Metro has the project in engineering right now. It's going through the environmental engineering process. The next step would be to purchase the land and actually design the facility that will eventually improve Metro service to the city of Woodstock and the greater UP Northwest Line as a whole. So you're right, Mr. Hendricks, that ridership is down due to the pandemic, but ridership is recovering. In fact, on weekends, it's actually exceeding 2019 ridership on Metro. You're seeing even Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, ridership is close to where it was before the pandemic. It really is Mondays and Fridays, people are working from home more than they did before the pandemic, and so that's where you're seeing ridership still declined. But things are trending upwards, and this project, even under the best circumstances, project wouldn't be constructed probably until 2030 at the earliest. And so with, over that five years, again, it's more of an opinion than a fact, but we feel that ridership will continue to increase over the next five to 10 years, and this sets us up to, and sets Metro up to, increase service if and when that does occur.
And are we, do we know when we're going to hit those, or at least get near those pre-COVID pandemic numbers?
Again, I can't speak to Metro's projections. If somebody from Metro was here, I would defer to them, but, but again, you're seeing ridership recovery, not just on Metro, but also on Pace and CTA. We went through a tough time with transit. We're still going through a tough time, but things are going to recover. All the trends are suggesting that, over the long term, not over the short term, but over the long term, ridership will recover to where it was pre-pandemic.
Anything else? Go ahead, sir.
No, you're good. I understand that point of view. It's just, you know, at a point where I know down in Springfield, there's discussion on the fiscal cliff of these public transit agencies. You know, I just question, I guess, I don't know if it's, if it's more of a political reason to want to be supporting this, but it just, to me, it just doesn't make sense. I'll likely be a no on this, but I'm open. It just, when we, again, when we have ever increasing costs from these unfunded state mandates in particular, and we can be using these RTA sales tax dollars towards those purposes to help offset that, and then instead, we're going to build a new rail, or an expanded rail yard in Woodstock for something that's, you know, 40% pre-levels. We're expending money that could be used elsewhere for decreased ridership that is trending in the right direction, I suppose, but I just question whether it's the best use of our taxpayer dollars. And that's all I have.
Mr. Kunkel.
While I agree with the use of taxpayer dollars may look like, on the short term, that's a better plan, and we do use way more pace bus here than we do Metro, but I think for the overall health and growth and long-term future of McHenry County, this is a really, really vital tool. Not only is it going to bring construction jobs, it brings it right down to Woodstock proper. Once this is in and becomes a route, I think it brings a ton of commerce into McHenry County. And this means you have to have enough vision to look out, and an old guy like me, it gets a little tough to look out to 2030, but I do have kids and grandkids, and I think for the overall stability and health of McHenry County's future, excuse me, future growth, I think this is a good program. Thank you.
Dr. Sager.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I would absolutely agree with Member Kunkel. I think we have to look at this in terms of the long term. First, the growth recovery in terms of ridership is in double digits in all of the service agencies, first. And so that is continuing to increase and improve. When we get to the pre-2019 levels, again, the pre-pandemic levels, we're probably talking about five years of recovery. But at the same time, we have to look beyond that. And there is a very strong push for walkable communities and sustainable communities for transit, and certainly, the city of Woodstock has a potential of 13 acres open for development within, you know, a block of the train station there in Woodstock. So that's the first thing. I think that the city of Woodstock is very, very supportive of transit communities, and this certainly is an opportunity. Second thing I think we have to keep in mind is the fact that, right now, the parking function for Metro in McHenry County is downtown Crystal Lake. And I know that Crystal Lake as a community is very interested in supporting this, because they would like to transition that parking function out to the rural Woodstock area in order to be able to utilize that space in downtown Crystal Lake for growth and development. Finally, I would agree absolutely that we're looking in the long term regarding economic development. That's one of our highest priorities for our county, and certainly one of the highest priorities for communities within our area. And as we look at the construction of this rail yard, not only is it going to provide temporary jobs in terms of the construction aspect itself, but it's going to provide long-term jobs as well to the county because of the fact that this is going to be not just a parking function, but the plan is to have a service function as well, so that there would be individuals housed at this facility that would indeed begin to work with maintenance of the cars and the engines themselves. And so it is a service function as well. That means long-term job opportunities for the region. Additionally, I think we have to understand that Woodstock would have, in essence, the current schedule that Crystal Lake has, and having a greater opportunity for ridership schedule is very, very important to growth and to economic development. And so we're looking forward to that. It's the right thing to do. It's a long time. You know, I, as mayor of the city of Woodstock formerly, we've been working on this for a good 15 years, and it's going to continue to be another 10 years before this comes to fruition. It is no different than primary or major highway projects within communities or within counties. It takes not only a vision, but it takes strong commitment to working it through. This is our opportunity to support the steps to work this through for economic growth and development, convenience, and certainly, certainly, the opportunity for us to see a greater increase in residential service and opportunity. And so we want to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Gotamaller. Mr. Gattamaller?
Yes, the, I, in addition to Mr. Kunkel and Mr. Sa, Dr. Saager, I would add, there is one other extreme limit on the system right now in the Northwest line. When you park all these trains at night that we operate on the Northwest line, you have one room for expansion. You can add one single car. That's it. If you don't build an additional yard, you cannot increase your train traffic on this line because you don't have any more room for, to park the trains at night. And from my perspective, I look at this and say, you know, if, if you look at McHenry County's history over the last 100 years, Crystal Lake was always the biggest town at the beginning because it had train traffic. There's no reason why the train should stop in Crystal Lake. It used to stop in Geneva 100 years ago. I, it, it, we need the yard. Long-term, we need the yard, and it's the only way we're going to have that traffic continue and increase if we have a place at night to park the trains. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments? Pete, you got a report for us today?
I, just a couple of comments. I, yesterday morning at our regional training center, we were to have a, a presentation from IEMA on the National Incident Management System, how nationwide emergency managers manage incidents. IEMA had some personnel changes, and they weren't able to deliver the staff, our own staff, David Christensen and Brooke Lloyd, provided what I thought was an even more efficient use of our time and a nice presentation. And I think Carolyn Campbell and Deana Crigger were there attending. We also had represented, myself and Scott and Shaylan were there. We had, the Coroner's Office was there, the Auditor's Office, Algonquin Township, McHenry Township, Village of Lakewood, Village of Huntley, Village of Lake and the Hills, and the City of Harvard. So it was a good presentation. I want to thank David and Brooke for that. Only other thing I want to note this morning is, if you guys would each give me a minute after the meeting and check your badge on this interior door. Deana knows what I'm talking about. We, we had a, a change earlier this week in the technology, and it's working for most, but not for all. So if you could just check your badge, if it, if it's going to trigger that interior lock. It's not the exterior locks. Those are fine. It's this interior door badge that, that isn't working for everyone. If it's, if it's not working for you, please let Christie or Kathy know. We'll, we'll need to get that taken care of. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Pete. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Kaminski, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good day.
Aye.